December 12th. I need a motion to accept the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Lawrence, a second by Mr. Tisdale. Any discussion? All in favor? Seven zero. Now move to our presentation agenda, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I was gonna read a press release regarding the, as everyone was aware of in July, we formed our own emergency service district. And in October, we requested some proposals for the very specific needs of ambulance service in the city of Biloxi and its citizens. And the evaluations have taken place. We visited with all the, all the, I've already said most of it right here. But all the parties, and we've determined that Pafford Emergency Medical Services in Ridgeland will be, who will proceed with the finalization of contract service to take up the service within 30 days, I believe, Chief. But anyway, that's the, the press release that will be going out, and we're excited to be able to do some very specific things that we've been unable to do as part of the existing ambulance service district. And I think that pretty much concludes my report, right Chiefs? Okay. Thank you.
All right, well now move to our council reports. Mr. Lawrence.
Hi there, Baron, this is Christmas cool today, it's nice, isn't it? I love it. We had the Walmart parade today with Sunday, Saturday, two o'clock, was pretty awesome, nice crowd. I know Nation probably tell you a little more about that, but it turned out great. We had a light in the town of Green last Wednesday, they had a great crowd for that. A lot of people came, so that turned out nice, turned on the Christmas tree, try to light it up to sit as much as we can. Do we have more lights coming in, both of?
Sherry, no, I don't think.
More lights?
We've been fixing some lights that are up that are not working, I think that's in the, in process right now. But the plan is for next year to really move forward with the, an expansive decoration plan.
And then we have the, Kenny could probably elaborate on this on there. Moca Brea Bill, we had the 26.2 mile marathon, and they said they had 50,000 people, I don't believe they had that many, but they had a big crowd. So that turned out really great for the city, that was Saturday and Sunday. So those two things were good. And the other thing, Mayor, we had talked to you about the 3% raise, did you put anything together at all for us to look at in the next weeks?
Not never ready to.
Say again?
I'm not, yeah, we're looking at it continually, and looking at the revenue offset, and where we can put a plan together. But I'm not ready to, to present it to this council at this point.
All right, just wanted to make sure we brought that up, still working on that.
Yep.
And that's our other thing, thank you.
Thank you.
Thirty-seven seconds.
That's, you're, you're, you're going for a record today. Mr. Gines?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, okay, just wanna, congratulations on your Christmas parade, and I wanna come back on that, and we're having another Christmas parade Saturday, Sunday, Sunday. Sunday at three o'clock, down Division Street, and immediately afterwards, we're gonna have give away almost 1,000 toys like we did last year at the Biloxi Civic Center. So I just wanna invite everybody out to the Christmas parade, Sunday, have a Santa Claus, and big toys given away for the community. That concludes my report. Oh, three, three o'clock, three o'clock Sunday is the parade, and immediately after, the tour train will take some of the kids over to the civic center and give away a bunch of toys.
Where y'all start at?
We're gonna start at, what's the park down there? O'Reilly Park, there we go, there's a voice I heard in the back, on Division Street. Yes, sir, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Newman. Mr. Demming?
Yeah, just a couple of things, I was speaking with Ms. Bell, it looks like we're gonna have, I think, a proposal for, for the mayor regarding the, the dog park stuff that was put in the budget. One thing I wanted to ask you, Mr. Mayor, part of the proposal, part of the expenditures are gonna be, I don't know what to call them, dog poop stations? They're, they're little poles, waste baskets for people to pick up the excrement from their canine friends, and put them in the bags, or in, in the baskets, right? They do have a slot to put refillable bags in, I think those bags can be kind of expensive. I was wondering if we could do like a B-mail type thing that says, hey guys, if you go to the dog parks, BYOB, you know, bring your own bag for, for your dog? And, and, and let it, let it be known so, so we can help reduce some of the costs on the city for replacing all of those bags, if people brings their bags with them. We do have the trash cans, and I think she's talking about putting together the, the personnel to maintain the cleanliness of, of those, those parks and, and the dog poop receptacles, or whatever they're called. Lastly, Ms. Labatza, if you could give me an update, I know we, you said that, I believe we've completed all the, all the paving in the ward, but there were some concerns with the water issues near the bluffs, and we had the water main that bust, I think, last week or two weeks ago on Pops Ferry Road. If you could give me an update and some information about the bluff's concerns.
Okay, so they, they had a water main break, it was in Pops Ferry Road, but affected the bluff subdivision. When our repair place contractor went out there, he made a temporary repair, he's gotta come back and make some permanent repairs. One of the problems is, is they can't shut off the water where they need to make the repair, so we were gonna have them come in and put in a valve so they could isolate the bluffs. Well, when they got it, I think I sent y'all an email last week, where they came, there was, it's gonna be like a 30-minute shutdown, it's gonna be really quick, they came last week, they couldn't find the valves to shut off the main on Pops Ferry. So we actually have ground penetrating radar out there today to locate some valves. If they are not able to locate valves, we're gonna have to have another team come in and install, what, it's what they call it, insert a valve, they'll come in and play, be about two weeks where they can get here. But once they get here, and either we find the valve or we get the insert a valve company, the bluffs will only be shut down for, shouldn't be more than 30 minutes to an hour. It's gonna be a quick repair for them to get in there and get right back out. If we can get the valves in place, the bluffs won't have to have a boil water notice, that's what we're trying to prevent. If they, if they do have to have one, I mean, we'll, we'll let everybody know, we'll let people in the subdivision know as well.
So regardless of whether there's a valve there now or not, it still would probably be a 30-minute disrupt?
Right, shouldn't be 30 minutes, maybe an hour, was what the contractor's telling us, of course, unless some, sometimes they get in there and they, more things break as they're fixing, it happens on, on older parts of the water lines, but we're, we're not expecting more than 30 minutes.
Ms. Labatza, is there any reason for concern for the residents in that area?
No, not at all.
With their water?
No, no, the water's fine, the public works continues to test it, it's just fixing a main break, happens all the time, just unfortunately a routine thing.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Tisdale.
Thank you, yes, Christmas lights, Pass Road, Ward Five, from Pops Ferry Road to Bees, I counted them, seven, seven. And. I'm sorry. I know, I know, but I know, whoever handles them, I, I mean, I go through this every year, so we have seven this year. By the way, two of them don't light, light up at all. There are none on Eisenhower on the way to the mall, and. All I can do is offer a sigh, I don't know what to tell folks.
Well, as I, if I can respond, you know, regard, as I mentioned with George, you know, you can be in expansive, you know, plan for relighting the whole situation, we're just too short of a fuse and budget to take care of it right now.
And as I, I think I mentioned, there's a ton on Calvert Street, not knocking Calvert Street, but, you know, if you needed, if you needed to move a few over to Pass Road there in West Biloxi, that's, that's all I have, thank you.
No, you can leave them on Calvert Street.
Thank you, Mr. Glavin.
Thank you, yeah, we, we all enjoyed the Walmart at Christmas parade. I was with my driver, and I had all the beads and everything between us, and I said, you can, you can throw some if you want, you know, and he was throwing like handfuls at a time, and I said, well, wait a minute, Phil, you need to slow down a little bit, I didn't bring that many. But anyway, we, we, we had a great time, the weather cooperated, and it was, it was good to see all the kids and families out. The other thing to touch on the marathon, did we get some numbers, I heard some numbers in the media, how many people participated?
Said 50,000 were in the area.
Fifty thousand, 50,000 people? Yep, any issues, any issues with the influx? Would it go pretty smooth? Went pretty smooth, good, well, just goes to show, you know, a big event like that, you know, we can, we can pull it off.
Yeah, I think that figure was from WLox, they had something on the segment, they said 50,000 people were on the coast, I mean, I didn't see that, but it could have all been somewhere else.
I thought it was pretty innovative on how we used the lane and then crossed over and came back and finished, I thought that was pretty interesting, I was wondering on the way, as I was moving down, how they were gonna do that, but it was well done.
And I don't think we've reached the potential with this, this particular group, I think you're gonna see it continue to grow, and hopefully we'll, we'll communicate with all the organizers and make sure it grows in the right direction.
Chief, Chief Miller contacted me just afterwards, and I asked him how it went, one of the things he mentioned to me was that we were gonna have to just deal with the straggler issue in the future. The bigger this gets, the more people that are running the marathon, but in eight hours, and are just straggling in, and we're having to keep the police out there on the street much longer than they had planned. So we, we're just gonna have to deal with how, you know, what we do about the stragglers.
George, you're gonna have to pick up the pace next year, you know, you were bringing up the rear, I think.
They have a, they have a, a maximum amount of time, and they cut it off. That's, that's with any marathon or half marathon, you have a max amount of time you're allowed, and they should, I mean, they start picking up everything usually.
Right, that, that's our problem, if there's people still out there on the road, even though they've passed that hour, we feel like we have to be safeguarding them and keeping the lanes, I mean, again, a police officer virtually every intersection from one end of Biloxi to the other.
Yep, but this time of year, you know, we're talking about December, and just, just a really good event, I think it promotes the image of a healthy.
It's a great event.
Environment and all that good stuff, and, and I'm sure those 50,000 plus went back home, talked about the hospitality they, they experienced here on, on the coast. So with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you, just wanna thank everyone that was involved in the Walmart at Christmas parade, Sherry, Police Department, our Fire Department, and then the Councilman Mayor that came to it. I think it was probably the biggest crowd we've had, it's the seventh year, so hopefully it continues to grow, appreciate everyone coming to that. That will include, conclude council reports, we'll now move to our public agenda. Citizen comments, we'll have a total allotted time of 45 minutes, each person will be allowed three minutes to speak. When you come forward, please state your name and address, and sign in at the paper, on the paper at the table. I'll start on my left side and your right side, would anyone on my left side like to speak? Please come forward, state your name and address, and sign in.
Hi, I'm Bob Hudson, 119 Jefferson Davis. I'm here to speak again, in opposition to the proposed limit of 125 short-term rentals located in specifically the zones RM20 and RM30. Last week, I shared some statistics with the city council on how Biloxi is way outpacing Gulfport. 12 to 1, and in Gulfport, it's 5.6 to 1 in Ocean Springs per residential household. I'd like to share a few more stats today that our team has found, our neighbor, when I say team, I mean our neighbors. Not only are our ratios crazy high in comparison to our surrounding neighboring cities, Biloxi's housing unit rental rates are 12% higher than Gulfport and 20%, 24% higher than Ocean Springs, so we have the highest rental rates on top of it. As you probably already know, high rent rates drive out the lower and middle-class income people. As time goes on, there isn't anyone to work the low-skill jobs, and the employers have to increase wages to get low-skill workers to fill those positions. This drives up the cost of goods and services in the local economy, it was saying to me that casinos and the hotel businesses would really be countering this pretty strongly, but I haven't seen much resistance to that. Our neighborhood thinks a cap on SDRs is a good idea, actually, but not a cap that's double what our existing number of conditional use permits are in those zones RM20 and RM30. I'd like to offer a counterproposal, actually two of them, one to limit the SDRs to 65, not 125, it gives us a few more, I think we're around 61, 62 now, gives us a few more. Or, you know, in, in this, we don't wanna limit other areas, if other areas want more short-term rentals, have at it. It's really, a counterproposal would be, can we carve out Zone 1, or our area of Zone, Ward 1, George Lawrence's zone, and limit that to whatever it is, plus a couple of more? And then everyone else, all the other zones, commercial can have as many short-term rentals as they want. And that way, it doesn't interfere with those that are in favor of all these short-term rentals, there's gotta be a compromise, we've spent a ton of resources and time, I know you guys are hearing this thing for five, six years now, I know it's gotta be getting old for you guys, it's certainly getting old for the neighbors, we're committing a lot of time to this. This could put an end to this war, right, this could stop it, we got an opportunity today to stop this, put the cap where it should be, finish it. That, that would be a great solution, I think, for all of us here. Let's see, what else have I missed here? I think that, that's it.
Thank you, thank you, anyone else on my left side, your right side, anyone else on my left side? Please state your name and address and sign in.
I'm Teresa Thompson, 1506 Avalon Drive in Biloxi. I'm opposed to the case 23095 PC, the limit of 125 on conditional use for short-term rentals. I'm not particularly opposed to a limit, I'm more opposed to the fact that it's 125, it's way too many. The city has been pushing short-term rental scenarios for over five years, resulting in about 452 total short-term locations, 61 of which is RM20s, RM30 zones. At an average of three and a half rooms for short-term location, you have about 1,500 new hotel rooms that have been recovered from the thing that we started a lot of this from, is that we needed hotel rooms. The short-term rentals have been declared a commercial operation, a mini motel, but with limited motel requirements for building and or operating. However, there is no documentation and or proof showing improvement of financial conditions for the city due to these short-term rentals. The council has already approved four zones, the commercial business, CBs, the regional business, RVs, the waterfront, WAPS, downtown DT, to be permitted for short-term rentals with, right now, unlimited numbers. So there is enough space in the permitted areas to grow short-term rental. For five years, the citizens of RS75 residential neighborhoods have been fighting the intrusion of commercial activities in our RS75 well-established historic neighborhoods, because it starts to degrade the character of our neighborhoods. So every RM20 and RM30 conditional use puts a burden on the citizens fighting to keep the short-term rental or other commercial activities out of the established neighborhoods. Remember, all of these, or anything that starts with an R stands for residential, it's either a single-family or multifamily. It doesn't say anything about commercial activities in there, it's baits to be for a residential neighborhood. And we, we keep seeming to try and to counter that with the conditional uses. Since we have well over the number of hotel rooms that were given as a shortage after Katrina, and there is growth in the building of new real single-family homes in these residential areas, it seems it's time to go back to neighborhoods being no behoods, and let them grow and prosper, before you lose the citizens that are dedicated to keep the neighborhoods alive and well. The limit of conditional uses should be no higher than what they are now. The more important part is that the conditional use for short-term rental on RM20s and 30s should be removed for now until there's proven a need for them. Let's continue to grow the city, but not at the expense of destroying our history in the process. Please vote against 125 limit proposal, which could keep the fight going on for another five years. More importantly, determine a win-win course of action that will keep you, the council members, and us, the citizens, from constantly discussing short-term rentals.
Thank you.
And Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Anyone else on my left and your right, anyone else on my left and your right? Mr. Seymour?
Mark Seymour, Seymour Engineering. I believe Councilman Glavin had some questions about the SAVs that we're working on, on your dredge projects. We're working with Christie's office, putting together a mitigation plan, the current spot that we're looking at is at the Pops Ferry Causeway. During these dormant, a couple months until April or May, we have to basically just sit, sit with our hands in our pocket with the Corps until we can go out and re-identify these spots. The, the good news is, on dredging projects going forward, we found out that this summer, with, with the hot weather and the hot temperatures, the high salinity, a lot of the SAVs went away, so we went out and made kind of a clean sweep of every, everyone that we thought might, might be upcoming, and go, went ahead and gave a new report to the Corps, so we're pushing forward. It is a slower process than, than we'd all like to see, but it's just a part of, just what comes with, with the dredging, dredging projects in general. I don't know if y'all have any questions or, or comments.
We, we can't do questions during this, but when it comes up on the agenda, if anyone has any questions, we'll, we'll let them ask. Okay, thank you. Thank you, anyone else on my left side, anyone else on my left side? Now move to the right side, anyone on my right and your left, anyone on my right, your left? All right, if there's no one else, that'll end citizen comments, we'll now move to the policy agenda. Ordinance A.
Ordinance to amend the land development ordinance pertaining to the addition of limits for conditional use, short-term rental approval.
This was motion by Mr. Tisdale and second by Mr. Glavin. Discussion, Mr. Tisdale?
Yes, Jerry, just a couple of questions, if you don't mind, actually only one, I, the number 125, I think, came up with the planning committee, and how do we arrive at that number?
Well, actually, that came as a recommendation from you, Dr. Tisdale, the 125, when you sent the information to us and asked us to have the public hearing on it.
And, and, and I think you're right, right now, and the reason I looked at the number, in fact, I know you're right, thanks for being honest. But it was, but then, in what I, the number I included, a number of units, was the new construction on Briarfield, which was about 60 units, I think.
Yes, sir.
That was actually in a CB zone where they're permitted.
That's correct.
So although they're short-term rentals, they're not in an RM20 or RM30 zone.
That's correct.
Okay, so, so I'm comfortable in offering an amendment, thank you, that's all I have, Jerry. And I'm, I'm off, I would offer this amendment that we cap these short-term rentals only in RM20 and RM30 zones where conditional uses are required at 65 rather than 125. So I would offer that amendment after we've had some discussion, so I'll just leave that amendment hanging, I'm interested in if there are other comments or discussion.
All right, Mr. Glavin?
Yep, Jerry, I appreciate, no, I don't really have a specific question, but, but we've looked at it, I think there's been 61 short-term rentals in conditional use, and, and the majority have been in use by right. And I appreciate Dr. Tisdale's throwing that number out there, 65, perhaps, perhaps a little bit higher number, I'm not advocating the 1, 125, but perhaps 75 would be a little bit more prudent to give some breathing room, which, you know, there may be development out there that, that might be, I guess, useful, or, or that it fits in some of the conditional use areas. So as we move through this, I, I would like, maybe, perhaps we consider a little higher number, maybe 75, that's all I have.
All right, Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, Mike Lynn has sent us something that, if you really look at it, 392 of the short-term, short-term rentals were permitted, has nothing to do with conditional use. And we're not changing that at all, so there's plenty of places to put short-term rentals, which you can see they've done already, 392. The 61 is basically in RM20 and RM30, and that's to me the way the cap needs to be made, and eliminate that completely. Once you get to 65, 70, we all vote on, that's fine, but you get to that, and that's it, no more. You still have plenty of zones, four of them, where the majority of the short-term rentals are listed at 392. It's like Paul said, that Paulman had nothing to do with the neighborhood, RM20, RM30, that was permitted, 60, so that's how he got to 125 pretty quick. So my suggestion is, y'all come with a number, 65, 70, I don't really care, put a cap on that, and that's done. You got plenty of room with the other four zones, where 392 people can do what is permitted. So you just use what we have already, and eliminate everything else in this resolution.
Councilman Lawrence, I, I wanna make sure I'm right on this, if we did put a cap, later we can adjust that cap if the council chose to, correct? Okay, so it's not a permanent cap, just so we all know, if we feel that there's a need to expand that cap later on, we can always say, hey, we're gonna, we're gonna expand that cap from, if, if that goes through today, we can always expand that cap. That's all, I just wanted to make that point, thank you.
Well, you look at the total number, there, you're talking about 450, you're talking about 15%, is in all 20s, RM30s. So you don't really need anything else in RM20, which is the neighborhoods, the residential, you have plenty of room in these other four zones, which you see, you know, the majority are sitting in the other four zones, 392 units. So I mean, that just pretty much takes care of itself to me.
Okay, Mr. Gines?
Yeah, I'm kind of like Kenny Glavin on this one, we need to kind of meet somewhere in the middle, and I'm proposing the middle ground would be 95, 65 from 125 would be somewhere around 95, so that's what I would suggest, meeting in the middle, thank you.
Ms. Newman? Mr. Demming?
There's so much, I don't know where to begin. First, with regard to choosing a number to cap, I think is as close to arbitrary and capricious as can be legally defined. I don't know what justification for these numbers we could give, other than arbitrarily plucked out of the air. We have men on the council right now, three different numbers that they've given out, which demonstrates how arbitrary it is, and why that's important is because of what Kenny said, it's not even a hard and fast cap. So if we put a cap on here, and say we do 65, or 75, or 95, then the 96th person comes to us and asks us to amend the ordinance to allow them to do a conditional use, we have that right, but every one of these conditional uses comes before us anyway. And so we get to determine that, all we're doing is making it more complicated and more difficult for the entire system, when they have to come before us anyway, and I guarantee you, if there's any cap put on there, whether it's 61, 62, 75, or 125, the same group of people will be here every time, anytime a short-term rental comes up, challenging it. It doesn't matter if there's a cap or not, it won't stop the war, we'll have a war every time a conditional use comes up, the same as we always do. What we're doing is just wasting our time and ink, changing an ordinance to satisfy no purpose at all, there's, it's completely arbitrary, and it's not permanent, it's amendable. The reason why it's so important that we maintain allowing short-term uses is because we believe in property rights here, I think most of us do, except for when somebody doesn't agree with what somebody else is doing with their property. Biloxi has so many because people wanna come to Biloxi, when you compare Gulfport and Ocean Springs to Biloxi, it's an unfair comparison, because we are the tourist destination, people come here, people stay here, and prices should be higher. It's good for the economy when the market determines that the value of goods and services provided are more than it used to be, that's a good thing for economies. There's, there's other discussions that it's sometimes, these, these properties that are all converted to short-term rentals will become empty, and that's fine, those are market cycles, what happens is those become properties for sale, properties for rent, anything that, that anyone could do with a home, whether it's Section 8. anything that anyone could do with a home, whether it's Section 8, hut housing. I mean, we fight these all the time, and people don't understand that they have absolute rights, anywhere in the city, to become a Section 8 house. 100%, they can become a halfway house. These people with their properties in neighborhoods, that we don't allow them to do what they want to do with their property, they'll do what we don't want them to do with their property. I promise, I've seen it numerous times. But most importantly, I don't think there needs to be a cap, because one, it's not permanent, and two, it's arbitrary. There's no basis for it, and it just doesn't make sense. We have to hear these arguments every single time. We're gonna make the determination whether it's 65 when the 66th comes, and the 67th, and the 68th, and the 69th, and so on and so forth. It's just the way it is. The cap is irrelevant, it's just a waste of ink and time. I'll yield.
Mr. Tisdale, do you have anything else?
Sure. By any chance, might you know in Ward 4, how many short-term rentals there are in RM 20 or 30 zones?
Not enough.
So it might be helpful for anybody who's listening to check that out, and put short-term rentals in Ward 4. In Ward 1, I mean, these people have been coming to, these people, these citizens have been coming to enough council meetings, I'm surprised they're not getting their mail here, quite honestly. But I think Mr. Hudson is still here. Baba, I just know your name because you've been speaking, but I think you noted in your research that other cities have caps on short-term rentals, right, here, close to us? And I think roughly in my ward, which is the smallest ward in terms of land, I guess, land or square miles, I probably have a little more than half, 30 or 35 of those 61 short-term rentals. And again, another 60 coming into a neighborhood where there's already about 25, so that neighborhood is shot out there by the mole. Mr. Creel, I don't expect you to know this off the top of your head, but it occurred to me, with the 61 that we currently have, do you know if all of them have renewed their permits, their short-term rental permits?
Yes, sir, these are ones that were actually right nailed.
Okay.
If they did not renew their license, they would not have been counted as a part of that 61.
Okay, thank you very much. And when it comes to property rights, we, my colleague here, my friend, he is my friend, today, today's my friend, I think. But we have a difference of opinion on this, just as he said, that property owners have rights. The folks in this case, here in Ward 1, are property owners, they have rights too. They live in a neighborhood, a neighborhood, they know most of their neighbors. It's an established neighborhood, and neighborhoods tend to come and go. But it sure would be nice, since I've tried just about everything else, except this, to just look at where short-term rentals are approved as a conditional use, and put a cap on it. And I would prefer 65, but my friend Kenny Glavine mentioned 70, 75. I could go along with that, I can't go with 120. And I explained how we arrived at that 120, I'd forgotten that I'd calculated that. But it sure would give everybody a break in the action, at least enough time to maybe spend a Tuesday at home instead of at a council meeting, continuing to fight these issues. And it could well be a, you know, a campaign issue the next election cycle, I'm just saying. That's all I have to say. But I am prepared to offer an amendment when the discussion is over. Thank you.
Mr. Glavine, do you have anything else? Okay. I have nothing. So, we have a bunch of different opinions, so I guess we'll go through the process and offer amendments and see which one takes hold. Mr. Deming?
I know, Mr. Hudson, and we're on the opposite sides of this, and with all of you, and I don't, I don't think less of you guys, I appreciate you coming here. I'm just on the opposite end of this, this one little battle here. There's a fact that I think we leave out, when we look at short-term rentals, and I looked at this a long time ago, when we first started this process, it's the conversion rate of homes to rental, right? And so, in these areas where houses are 20 years or older, and I've seen this in Ward 4 extensively, and I looked at this when I had 1,600 voters come out in the first election, then 1,200 voters come out four years later, then 700 voters come out the next year, right? And it's because these neighborhoods that are 20 years or older tend to become rental homes. People move from these homes typically. Now, there's gonna be some long-term family homes, there are, but the rental, and I can't remember, but it was astonishing, it was like a 40 something percent rate of rentals in these, in neighborhoods, and they can, they just continue to convert to rentals, right? And I don't know if you've seen neighborhoods that are rental homes, and the condition of those homes, long-term renters do not take care of property the way short-term leasers do. Like, short-term leasers maintain the value, and I know that people have talked about the degradation of their neighborhoods and things like that, but that's all anecdotal. There's zero empirical data that shows that short-term rentals damage neighborhoods. Property values actually increased, the presentation of the curbside appeal of homes increased. Like, these aren't bad things. I know the old adage, it's okay if it's not next to your house, I get that, I do. But at some point, we have to make these determinations, and we do on this council, we do it very well. And we've voted against some that are in your area that we agreed with you guys on. And then we voted for some that we disagreed with you guys on, but it's, this council has dealt with this situation numerous times, and I think councils moving forward will continue to do that, and do it well. All I want to do is remind everybody that these homes, whether they're short-term rentals or not, they're gonna convert to something. And in a lot of cases, it's something worse than a short-term rental. That's all I have.
Mr. Geins, did you want to say something else?
Yes, since we're addressing Mr. Hudson. You said something that profound, and I thought it resonated with the council. But we did try that. You're talking about carving out a certain area, which we called an overlay district. And we did charge the community development director in finding the area so we can carve it out, and so we wouldn't have to go to war. That suggestion was put on the table. But of course, it never, it never, nobody liked it, neither side liked it. And I think that if we go back to it and try it one more time, and lock it up, then we won't have to go through this over and over and over. That's the key. But of course, just like Councilman Deming said, we're gonna continue to go over this, over and over and over, until we come to that kind of resolution. Yeah, come on up on, yeah. For discussion.
There could be a way to, another compromise, right? To get this to work, to, how do I want to say this? If we carve out this, put a time limit on it. Say it's good for a year, good for two years, that gives us that reprieve, right? So maybe we have that expiration date on this cap. We can come back to it in two years or three years. And then we don't have the problem that Mr. Deming was suggesting we're gonna have, which he's right. Right, you're just gonna keep raising it as people come in, and we think it's a good idea, and we're still at this forever, ad infinitum. What about that idea? Add that to the amendment?
Yeah, well, that's something to consider. But thank you again for your comments, and I appreciate you mentioning that.
So regardless of what's done, and I think that everybody up here has some valid points. But this proves that, like Mr. Deming said, that people want to come to Biloxi. Gulfport does not have any restrictions whatsoever on short-term rentals, none. They have no short-term rental policies at all. If I wanted to go buy every house on the beach in Gulfport and turn it to a short-term rental, I could do it. But people want to be in Biloxi. There's a reason that there's whatever number of hotel rooms in all of Harrison County, and over 50% of them are in Biloxi. Because when people come to Biloxi from out, from the, to the coast, from out of town, the majority of them want to come to Biloxi. That's why our tourism dollars that are generated are higher than any other city on the coast, because people from out of town, when they visit the coast, want to come to Biloxi. So regardless of what we do in this situation, our tourism base is not going to go away. It's gonna continue to grow, because this is what, you know, the concept of, you know, a certain amount of short-term rentals being in Gulfport versus Biloxi based on the population. Well, I mean, the hotel rooms, you know, we have four times the amount of hotel rooms that Gulfport has. And so, people from out of town, this is where they want to come. That's why, during cruising the coast, the majority of the traffic is in Biloxi. That's why we have the nightmares that we have during cruising the coast, is because this is where everyone wants to congregate. The Mardi Gras groups, where do they have their, where do they have their parades, in Biloxi. And so, this is where, for events and for vacationing, and this is where people want to be. And so that's not gonna change, and it's gonna continue to grow as the city grows. I'm okay with placing a cap. I don't know what that magic number is, just, and doing it for a certain time period or something may be the answer. But, but I do believe that short-term rentals are a large part of the future of tourism in the city of Biloxi. And I know that we've asked for this data before, but we have had very few issues with short-term rentals that we've approved, that weren't used by right, that we've approved and we've had all these fights over. But we've had very few issues with these rentals that have came into these neighborhoods. I'm not saying that there's none, but there's also issues with long-term rentals that go into neighborhoods as well. So I'm willing to do, you know, whatever number the council comes up with, I'm willing to do that. But short-term rentals aren't going away, and it's gonna be something that continues to, people want to continue to come to Biloxi, to put them here. You know, it's just case in point, is Gulfport has no restrictions whatsoever. And the amount of people that we have, the amount of short-term rentals that we have in Biloxi compared to Gulfport, it's not even comparable. It's because people want to come here. George?
Yeah, I had, you talk about the neighborhood from Bill Morrison to White Avenue, it's over 80% local people own their property. It's not a bunch of renters. There's some short-term rentals there, not many, and that's where it should stay. That's why people want to come to Biloxi, because of people in Biloxi. Nothing to do with short-term rentals, they're available, fine. They're not, they'll come somewhere and stay, they're doing it forever. You know, short-term rentals only been around since 2018. And we had a ton of people coming to Biloxi before we ever started short-term rentals. Yeah, some people like staying at home, that's fine. I just told y'all, permitted area is 392, not in residential neighborhood, that's 61. So the cap you want to come up with, 65, 70, y'all come with a number like that, we can stay with that. But don't say anything about the neighborhood, this town was built off of the neighborhoods, the people in these neighborhoods, the hospitality. That's where they come from. They want to come in and fight all the time for their property, yes. There's not renters coming here fighting, there's people that own their property, generations after generation been there. That is Biloxi, and that's who we are. And that's who we should stand for, and we should not change. So me, no, nothing to do with renters, the short-term rentals, this town was built off neighborhoods and the people in Biloxi. Thank you.
Mr. President, I would move to amend the maximum number of short-term rentals that require a conditional use in RM 20 and 30, be amended from 125 to 75. I'll second it.
Okay, is there any discussion?
I got one little comment. I don't think this is a move, this is what I believe, it's not egregious or capricious. I think we've heard from experts, talking about the industry possibly reaching saturation, therefore having an economic burden, you know, to this industry. So in addition to hearing from frequently now, the neighbors that have some concerns about the encroachment of short-term rentals in their neighborhood, in these particular specific zones. So I agree that the number sounds about right.
Okay, is there any other discussion?
And we're open to addressing this within a year, correct?
Yeah, and if y'all want to put a timeframe on it, you know, to come back, like, that we can do that in the amendment, if anyone wants to do that. Any other discussion? Mr. Deming?
Just, and I don't mean to target anything you said, Kenny, but it just, when you brought it up, I'm always cautious to entertain the requests of people in the industry, especially if they're talking about economic burdens, that tends to be protectionism, or, or the desire of monopoly, right? That's what, they want us to cap industries so they don't have to compete, or so that their numbers don't come down, they don't have to convert into, they don't have to revolutionize or change their business models. That's just, I would just caution us on taking advice from people in the industry when the advice is to close down the entrance to that industry. That's all I have. But I don't support a 75 cap, if there was a cap, it should be a little higher than that.
Any other discussion? Okay, so I'm gonna call for the question on the amendment to cap conditional use, short-term rentals in RM 20 and RM 30 at 75. All in favor of the amendment? All opposed? Five to two, with Ms. Newman and Mr. Deming in opposition. Okay, now I'll call for the question. All in favor as the, of the item as amended? All opposed? Five to. Ms. Newman and Mr. Deming in opposition. Ordinance B?
Ordinance to grant the establishment of a planned development commercial master plan overlay district to be known as Thomasville Medical Park for property at 12290 North Oak Lawn.
I made that motion, and Mr. Tisdale seconded. I'd just like to say that this is a great, a great addition to our city, our community. And I know that Mr. Stifle and his clients here, if y'all would like to come up and tell us a little bit, I think this is, I read, a $150 million project, whenever it's all finished, is that correct?
Yep, that's what he said.
Somewhere, y'all want to come tell us a little bit about the project?
Sure, my name is Bart Edmiston. I'm an anesthesiologist over at Memorial and Merritt, and Cedar Lake, and Ocean Springs, and Pascagoula, and Biloxi, and the Bee's, and over at another center too. And my partner's not here, he's actually on call at Memorial, and so what we're doing is, basically, as the coast is growing, we're looking at, we're, we're out of room to take care of patients, and really, the heart of this is what's happening is, patients are going out of Mississippi. I, I'm from Long Beach, was born here, went to, born at Memorial, and grew up here, then moved over to Pensacola, and went off and played football and trained, and then came back, because this is where my heart is. And it's really a problem when you have really top-tier physicians, you know, I trained up in the Ivy Leagues and University of Florida, then went up to my residency and fellowship there, and came back here because this is where I wanted to be, right? And you have a lot of great physicians, but for some reason, we're seeing patients want to leave this area and head over to Louisiana, to Ochsner, or over to Texas, when they can get care here from patients, from physicians, and, you know, healthcare centers that are just as good. So, a lot of my really close friends happen to be probably some of the brightest doctors there are in the, you know, in the oncology world, in the gastroenterology world, in the neurosurgical services, and spine world. And we've kind of decided that, rather than let these patients go and, you know, Mississippians lose out, why don't we create something, you know, great right here, and, you know, on the coast, and Woolmarket's a perfect place, right? And to answer your question about how much it's gonna cost, it depends. I think that, you know, it's gonna be, a conservative estimate's gonna be, you know, over 100 million. I do, I think that it has potential to go up above 150. The CEO of Memorial, I'm very close with, as well as Merritt, and actually the Singin' River CEO is River CEO is a former, is a former patient of mine. And I think that we can create, you know, really some synergy with the hospitals down here if we can get them to check their egos and work together instead of against themselves. I think we can create something great. So what we're going to do here, I don't know if we have a rendition, but the first, we're going to do this in three phases because frankly, you know, my, my partner and I are funding this, you know, the first part out of our pocket. So on the left-hand side, right next to Lee Tractor, if you're familiar with it, we're going to put a surgical center and bring a lot of the, you know, the best surgeons and physicians and try to congregate them here. And there are, you know, other centers, but like I said, you know, I'm the chief of anesthesia at all these places and we don't have any more room. We're, we're tapped. We, we need another facility. And so by getting, by putting Memorial, Merritt and hopefully Singin' River together in Ocean Springs, we can, we can create something really great here that, you know, that I was lucky enough to experience when I was at Dartmouth doing my training and create, really create a, a center that does it all. So that's kind of what this is all about. And, and so to, to go along with that, it's just not medical that we want to do. So, you know, one of the, one of the things that I think that, you know, as we were looking at this for a long time is we need, you know, the people, the residents in that area have to either drive all the way to Pops Ferry to go to Walmart, you know, Neighborhood Market or they have to go all the way to Memorial, I mean, Gulfport to go to a grocery store. So why, why isn't there a grocery store there? So, you know, I got in touch with David Roberts who owns Corner Market and talked to him about placing something like that there, you know. So we want to create something that gives back to the residents around there. And I think it's going to do really a great job of taking care of people. So, you know, it's, it's really close to me. I have a close family friend who had, unfortunately she passed away from breast cancer, but I don't know if you guys remember Mark Hubbard, but, you know, they, they got all their care outside of the area because, and so Bray and Brock and Mark and, and they always had to go outside and they had to, you know, it was, it was a, it was a problem paying for things. And I think that, you know, that's one of the things we want to do too, is create some kind of facility that, you know, can house people and, you know, be all encompassing.
Great. Well, welcome y'all to the, to Biloxi and Wool Market and we're excited about this. I do have one question. I know that this property backs up, you front Shriners and then whatever the road is that goes in towards, yeah, well, you have the road that comes off of Shriners, then you have North Oaklawn. Does, is there any traffic going to be going on to the, the road that, that runs into the subdivision or will that just be the backside of the building? No traffic, okay. That was, I had some of the people call and ask that. So will the traffic will dump onto the road that fronts the interstate or Shriners?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Is there any questions or?
We're really excited about it. When, you know, down the street, the Chevron Station, we call it the Wool Market Planning Commission. We've been talking this about, about years. So we would invite you 7:30 on Thursdays to, to drive by when you're not doing anything. But, no, it is, it is going to provide a tremendous opportunity to, to jump into the next level. We're investigating a number of improvements to Shriners and shortcut and that whole area out there. So we're, we're appreciative of, of your faith and, and ideas that it is the spot because it is the spot. So we thank you and I would offer our administration, you know, any kind of creativity we need to do and, and be innovation, you know, do what we need to do to, to take it to the next level. So on behalf of us, we'd like to say thank you too.
Well, thank you, Mayor Gillicuddy. Thank you to the council. I appreciate it.
And one of the other things is when we go to Jackson in January, one of our asks for financing is going to be to help us with financing to widen Shriners to the four-way stop to a four-lane with bike lanes and all that as well. So that's something that we're, we're working on and hopefully we have the state support on that as well.
I have a question for the mayor and Jerry. Does, would this project qualify for the medical zone that we talked about on Cedar Lake, which opens up a lot of incentives? And is that anything on the drawing board for this, for this development? Yeah, that's, that's something you, I think your group would be very interested in. It, it has a ton of incentives for additional development for you.
Well, thank you. Yes, sir.
All right. All right. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I just think it's a terrific project, wonderful opportunity. I was at the planning commission when you made the presentation and, and spoke with them about that. And, you know, that's the only interstate exit we have left, I think, in the city of Biloxi that, that is relatively undeveloped, at least on the north side. So that, that'd be a terrific project right there. So thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
All right. If there's no other discussion, I'll call for the question. All in favor? Seven zero. Ordinance C.
Ordinance to amend the code of ordinances pertaining to alcoholic beverages consumption and storage on unlicensed premises.
All right. This was moved by myself and Mr. Tisdale. Mr. Tisdale, any discussion?
Uh, no, not really. I think the, the amendment had, or what was tweaked on this, I believe, is, is that this would not, this ordinance would not apply when it's under a rental agreement with the city. Is that correct, Peter?
That's right. And also extending the hours for New Year's Day and just clarifying some of those things between beer and alcohol.
Correct. You, you, I had that as well. That, that's all I had.
I have nothing. Any other discussion? We'll start. Mr. Demming.
Mr. President, I just want to, if you'll note on the record that Mr. Newman abstained and didn't participate in the discussion on this item.
All right. Mr. Lawrence, did you have something?
Yeah, I was just, on these, just like we opened up the one on Judge Ziku, which does not deal with alcohol license or anything, they don't sell anything. How do you handle that with, just with people that really don't have alcohol license? How do you control them because they're not selling anything?
If they don't have a license, alcoholic license or connection with ABC, then they have to close at midnight under this.
But I'm saying the ones that don't have a license, that's what I'm asking you about.
Are you speaking at a cigar shop?
I just talked about the, the reason that we just brought up that they call it a brown bag. They had one on, they had a couple of them in town, but they have no alcohol license, they don't sell anything. But yet they can bring alcohol and drink. So how you control them?
They would, they would try to fall under being a club or a social club and they cannot be open for business after, after midnight to seven. That's, they're treated the same as any restaurant that does not have an alcoholic beverage
Because all falls under the same page.
Right. You either have a license or you don't. If you don't have a license, you shouldn't be consuming or serving alcohol after midnight if you're in a, it's still a, there's still licenses somewhat of a, a social club, whatever they, I don't know much more about them other than we looked into them and there's no real strikes on them.
They have a lot of people have dances and the dances usually last to one or two o'clock in the morning. For like the New Year's Eve dance or something, that's always been big at the city of Biloxi. So what do you do with them?
We've extended New Years and if it's an event at a city center where we have a rental agreement with somebody or the police are already there, it doesn't apply to them. But for New Years, we've extended it out, I think, till, till one in the morning.
Like the lodge has a dance, the L Club has dances on New Year's evening. Most of the time they last to one or two in the morning, you know. A lot of time they serve breakfast after that. Mardi Gras balls the same way. So I mean, as long as that doesn't affect any of them, or you handle that different.
I guess technically under this rule, you can have breakfast at one, but you can't have, you can't have a Bloody Mary at one.
Open bar.
Open bar.
You just got to eat a biscuit, that's it?
You can eat all night.
Yeah. I was just trying to figure it out, you know, because I just, hey, so if somebody complains and you, what is the penalty for these things? What's the penalty? What, what do you do to them?
We've got, we've got penalties in there. This is just another tool that, you know, we can use and the police can use when they've had issues come out of groups that are operating under some different business license and they're just telling people to bring your own liquor and we'll hold it for you and we'll let you drink your own liquor all night. Or they'll charge a, a different fee. It's just a way to sort of maneuver around ABC laws.
Yeah. They charge you a fee for your bottle, stuff like that. Just trying to see how it's going to affect a lot of things that people in Biloxi do on all these holidays, the Mardi Gras time, you know, Christmas time, New Year's Eve. So just long we're not affecting them.
Okay. All right. Any other questions?
I think Mr. Glavine resolved it for me now. So beer and light wine, which we created its own category in here for, is separate from, from ABC. Like they don't need ABC licensure to sell beer and light wine, right? They just need a permit through the city?
Well, there's different licenses for the beer and the, the beer, the light wine and the ABC. The beer and the wine permit is very easy to get. And so that was one of the things we wanted to clean up is we had them all lumped together. When, when in some cases, somebody might have a beer and wine license and if they do, then they could continue to sell beer and wine. So it was, this first version just needed some clarification on that to break them out into two separate categories.
How does this affect anybody that says bring your own stuff into the, into the, into the?
Like a restaurant?
Yeah, restaurant, facility, whatever. I'm just, it just down here, it says no person shall, dot, 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 unless it's owned by them. And so if they bring their own stuff into the venue, is that not covered by this? If it's not being served by the establishment, if they bring it in, set it on their own table, serve it to themselves, is that, is that a loophole? Is that a way around this?
No, that'd be allowed until midnight. I mean, what we have is a restaurant, sometimes they let people bring their own wine to the table because they don't want to go through the process. People could do that, but not many restaurants.
But those people usually charge a, a corking fee or a bottle service fee.
They might.
And so I'm referring to the system in which they're not offering any charge for a service. They're just allowing this to be on their premises.
Yeah. I don't think ABC allows people just to walk in with bottles of whiskey.
But if it's a venue that's not regulated by ABC. And on here, if it says no person, partnership or corporation, dot, 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 unless it's owned, not owned by said person, what if said person, I'm just understanding that language. Is said person is the owner of the venue? So if it's not owned by the owner of the venue, because at that point it would make no sense because the owner of venue would be required to have a license if it was in fact owned by that person.
Which paragraph of the dot, dot, dots?
It's the 1214. It, it's similar language used throughout this, but I was just right now looking at the language on 12 dash 14 dash two and three.
Okay.
And dash three is where I just saw the not owned by said person, partnership or corporation between the hours of midnight.
Yeah, I mean, I think that dealt with holding it or storing it. I mean, some.
Right. And so I think it does. I think the language, I think that the more obvious reading of the language is, is referring to the, the company, the restaurant, the venue, whatever it is, holding, storaging, pouring, serving, charging, anything like that. But if it was just an individual coming in with liquor that they main, that the, the customer maintained, the customer served, the customer consumed, that would be acceptable as per this statute or this ordinance?
Yeah, I think that, that refers to the, to the business. If the business had its own little stock of liquor, then that would not, that's not going to be covered.
Okay. That's, just wanted that clarification. Thank you.
That's a good point.
Correct me if I'm wrong. At the end of the day, this is just a, a, an arm of enforcement for, for trouble. We're not going to go around policing restaurants that have a brown bag policy or anything like that. This is just a way to enforce for when we have issues, something on the books to where we, we have a way to enforce the, yeah, okay. All right. If there's no more discussion, I'll call for the question. All in favor? Six zero. Ms. Newman abstaining. You didn't? Okay, I'm sorry. Five to one. Mr. Demming in opposition. You did raise your hand though, didn't you? You did raise your hand there. Okay. All right. Resolution D.
Resolution confirming mayor's appointment of Michael W. Peterson as commissioner of Gulfport Biloxi Regional Airport Authority.
I'll move it. I'll second it. All right. We have a motion by Mr. Glavine, a second by Mr. Tisdale. Any discussion?
Mr. President, let me, let me say this about the resolution. I'm, you know, it was, I want to, a couple of things I need to say. First of all, I want to thank Clay Williams for being there, the director of the Biloxi-Gulfport Airport. Some people call it Gulfport-Biloxi Airport, but he's been just a tremendous asset to our area, as has been, you know, General Clark Griffin. And he is moving away and General Mike Peterson, what is the subject of this resolution is a, who's going to step in and I think can be a fine replacement for a good man on that thing. Clay, if you want to say a little thing, anything about the, Mike and of course Clark, I'd be really appreciative of that. So Clay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's a very, I think it's a very, very important, we appreciate his significant expertise and his guidance and his approach and that does help us well position. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We also look forward to having, to General Mike Peterson.
Well, Clay, let me, let me say again, you know, y'all have done a tremendous job together, you know, especially with the service that we just, coming January 12th, I believe, we've got some direct flights and a lot of things on the radar. Y'all have been able to accomplish a lot of, you know, grants to improve the, the whole facility and, you know, so goes the airport, so goes our, our coast. So on behalf of the city, our, our administration as well as the council, we appreciate that and look forward to General Peterson and the, the General Spraggins and Dave and everything doing the good work that y'all already done. So I would congratulate them and encourage this appointment to be approved. Thank you, Clay.
Mayor, I mean, I just think you're very, you're a person helping us to encourage people to utilize the local facility. We greatly appreciate it.
Thank you, Clay. Appreciate your good patience today and being here. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. If there's no discussion, I'll call for the, call for the question. All in favor? Seven zero. We'll now move to consent agenda. Second. Of a motion by Mr. Lawrence, a second by Mr. Guines. Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, the first thing I want to do is on T, talk to the mayor and the mayor says to move this subject to call. And he said he'd be looking at dealing with maybe the, somebody new to replace Mr. Balka. So I put that on the table. He only subject to call.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right. We have a motion to table, item T, subject to call. We have a second, a motion by Mr. Lawrence, a second by Mr. Tisdale. Any discussion? All in favor? Oh, you have discussion?
I, what's the problem with Mr. Parker? I get that George doesn't like him, but I just don't know why we're tailing the subject to call. Is there an issue? I think Parker comes in, asks tough questions, does a great job when he's there. So I just don't understand why we're making a special exception to, to how we typically handle these things for Mr. Parker. Is there, did something come up? Is Mr. Parker not wanting the position anymore?
No. Again, we're appreciative of everything. I would ask, you know, and I may ask him last week to, to kind of delve into, you know, the service and, and what the future looks like. I think his, his appointment is, was up for replacement in July. Was it end of July, I think? Yeah. But, you know, there's a, you know, there's a need for confirming.
Was it, was it July that passed or July?
This is July 23, 23.
So it passed. So if we don't confirm Mr. Parker, what happens to that?
But he would still continue until we, continue on the board till we find a, you know, suitable replacement.
So just a suggestion, why don't we just leave Mr. Parker there until we have a replacement?
I think that's the intent.
Yeah. And I was just going to say the same thing that Councilman Demming said. You know, I served with Mr. Parker back before I became a councilman all four years. four years, and that was some good training before coming to this point. And, uh, he served well. He also helped me learn the position of, uh, planning commission. So, I, you know, I didn't see any problem with it, but they serve at the will of the mayor, so I have to respect what the mayor is saying. Thank you.
All right, there's no other discussion. I'll call for the question. All in favor of tabling T? All opposed? Six to one with Ms. Newman in opposition. All right, any other discussion? Mr. Lawrence?
The F, are these how many cones we lost in the fire? 450?
I think we just, uh...
Yes, sir, those were the replacement cones from the fire. We've ordered received and, and paid for those, or they were pay, uh, bought on our emergency purchase, and it's just a come to confirm it through you guys.
Do we have a place to store them this time, other than under the bridge?
Yes, sir.
And on the N, N O, one of them is testing for the sediment on the Sunrise Court dredging, and the other one is actually getting to do it. You got two different resolutions. So, you testing, what are you testing first, before you dredge?
You, you have to test the sediment before you dredge to make sure there's no chemicals in it before we dispose of it, no toxic chemicals. We've actually never had that happen, but it's just a requirement. And then the Second Amendment is just for Seymour Engineering to go ahead and start working on putting the plans and specs out so that we can put it out to bid once we get the permit.
Right. Because I know we're supposed to be getting ready to deal with all this with Keegan, and you lot have some toxicity in.
Yes.
That'd be a little different.
Yeah.
You better test that one pretty good before you get in that one. Let's see, uh, and on G, they said an emergency repair for the point of that pier. Was this from one of hurricanes, or did just something happen? You should repair one of the concrete panels.
This, we had a concrete panel, uh, break in half and fall in the water down there, and so, we had to do an emergency. We had to have boys come in, pull it out, and put in a, uh...
It just broke in half?
Yeah, it just broke in half one day.
Wow.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, that's pretty amazing. Let's see, I think... That's the other thing for me.
All right, Mr. Guines?
None.
Ms. Newman?
Yes, for S, I wanted to verify, it says for area nutrient and stormwater, is that to dredge the, the ponds in Hiller Park?
Yeah. We submitted a Restore Act project. We talking about the, which, in Hiller Park, right? Yeah. Right, we submitted a Restore Act project. It was deferred into a NERDA project. It's a federal project. And, uh, we've not been awarded that project yet, but, um, the MDEQ wants to do a cultural resource survey in Hiller Park before they make the award.
Okay.
So, they're willing to pay for the survey, and it's basically the same kind of a survey we've done in the past, when they dig a series of holes to see what's, maybe there's bones there or something.
Oh, okay. Because it's been needing dredging bad for years.
Yeah. Well, that, that dredging of that pond is part of the project that we asked for, that, as I said, has not been awarded yet. We'd be a subawardee ultimately to, uh, MDEQ.
All right, is that all? Mr. Demming? Mr. Tisdale?
Nothing.
Mr. Glavine?
Yeah, I, I do want to revisit N and O just briefly over in the Sunrise area. What is the timeframe, uh, once we, uh, pass this resolution, uh, to complete the, uh, survey and analysis of those areas?
Um, Mark could probably, actually, Mark could probably answer this question better than I can, because it has to do with the SAVs.
Mr. Seymour?
Yes, sir.
Y'all getting faster and faster, I understand.
Um, the sediment testing, we just have to go out and collect our samples and take that to a lab. It usually takes 30, 45 days. It, it's not a long period. Um, and then we just, that's one of the last boxes that we have to check with the Corps. I, I would hope that maybe by the summer, at the latest, we'll have a permit in hand and, and we, like Christie said earlier, we'll be putting the plans and specs together, have it ready to go, so we can advertise for bids, hopefully, you know, July of next year.
Will this also encompass, uh, confirming there's no submerged aquatic vegetation?
Yes, sir.
The same process?
That was one of them that we ran out, uh, because I, I live right around the corner from there, and I, I took my boat up in there and noticed that the SAVs were gone, so I sent my guys out there. And we, uh, we did, we updated our report for the Corps, went ahead and shot that off to them. So, we've, we've actually already jumped through that hoop on the SAVs.
So, that's going to save quite a bit of, we don't have to mitigate three to one for SAVs and all that good stuff. That's great news.
Saves a lot of time and money for us.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Is that all? All right. I just have one question. Item L, which is the Shriners Boulevard Water Sewer Extension. I was under the impression that that was done, so why are we spending another $716,000?
We, um, the first phase was done. We had money left in the MCWI grant that we received from the state, so we went to them and asked if we could do a Phase Two, which will extend that water line all the way north to the, um, city limits and tie into the utility authority line to make a loop in that area.
Okay.
Yeah, so you're right, the first phase is done. We're just doing the next phase of it.
All right, that's all I have. Um, I'll first ask for the question, and then we'll get any exceptions. All in favor of the consent agenda as amended? Seven zero. Any exceptions? Mr. Lawrence?
None.
Mr. Guines?
None.
Ms. Newman? Mr. Demming? Mr. Tisdale?
No, sir.
Mr. Glavine?
I have none.
I have none. All right, we'll now, um, do code enforcement.
Item A, Intuition Properties LLC, 249 Howard Avenue, that case has been resolved. Item B, George J. Jimenez Jr., 354 Holly Street, that case has been resolved. Item C, Ray Roy Ray LLC, 235 Howard Avenue, that case has been resolved. Wow. Item D, Excellent Holdings Corporation, 411 Anglada Street, this property's still in violation.
All right, is there anyone here on behalf of or in opposition to Excellent Holdings Corporation 411 Anglada Street? If not, this case is closed. Next item?
Item E, Reginald Collier, 337 Fayard Street, this property's still in violation.
Anyone here on behalf or in opposition to Reginald Collier, 337 Fayard Street?
Yes, I'm, uh, asked one more 30-day. Um, they cleaned up the Fayard Street side, which is said Fayard, but they didn't know that it was the backside of it.
That's great.
So, I'll just, uh, ask for one more 30-day.
I'll second it.
The last 30.
We have a motion by Mr. Guines, a second by Mr. Lawrence. All in favor? Seven zero. Now, that concludes code enforcement hearings. We'll now move to routine agenda.
The mood.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Lawrence, a second by Mr. Tisdale. Mr. Tisdale, you have any questions for Mr. Rody?
Uh, do not. George.
Somebody going to call him up, it doesn't matter.
Good afternoon, council. So, the question, I'm sure, should be about funding. If it is, we currently have $978,000 is in step four or five in the Mississippi PA website. It's been there four days. We usually get it, as I say, often around 10 to 15 days, once it reaches that step. This will be followed by an additional $681,000, and then we should see a fairly substantial, uh, fund, funding from MEMA, uh, since they're going over those reconciliation change orders that y'all approved at the previous council meeting, and that's a little over a million dollars. So, we should have a fairly substantial amount of money coming in here shortly.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. I, um, all in favor of the routine agenda? Seven zero. I need a, a motion and a second for council to go into closed session for the purpose of examining necessity to go into executive session to discuss personnel matters.
Make that motion, that council go into a closed session for the purpose of examining the necessity to go into executive discuss, session to discuss personnel matters.
All right, have a motion, a second. Mr. Lawrence, all in favor? Six one, Mr. Demming in opposition.
I would move that the council conclude the closed session and reconvene as an open meeting.
The mood.
All right, all in favor? Six one, Mr. Demming in opposition.
Yes, I would move that council now go into executive session.
The mood.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? All opposed?
I'd like to propose in memory of...
Ready for a motion when you're...
All right, I need a motion, um...
I move to conclude the executive session and reconvene as an open meeting.
All right.
I move.
We have a motion by Mr. Tisdale, second by Mr. Lawrence, all in favor? All right, Mr. Glavin, I need a motion, um, to adjourn.
I'll, I'll make that motion to adjourn in memory of, uh, Barbara Lyons and Joseph Jurich, uh, two, two fine Biloxians.
I'll second that.
And I need to mention before we vote on this, that, um, no action was taken in the executive session. All right, we have a motion, and we'll all second that, all in favor? Seven zero, meeting's adjourned.